At the broadcast.
The broadcast is now starting.
Madam Clerk.
Are in listen-only mode.
Please call the roll.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning. Supervisor Stewart.
Here.
Supervisor Brophy McGee.
Here.
Supervisor Lesko joining us remotely. Good morning. Can you hear me?
Here.
Thank you. Supervisor Gallardo.
Here.
Chairman Galvin.
Here. Good morning, everyone. As always, we have rules of decorum here at the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors, and we also have an opportunity for public comment at the end of the hearing. I will remind everyone here that we are here to do the people's business of Maricopa County. So I ask everyone, and I expect everyone, to obey the rules, and I will be repeating that before we go into public comment. Supervisor Gallardo, please introduce your guest that will lead us in today's invocation and pledge. And if you have any comments regarding your guests, we can do that after.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and once again, I apologize for my tardiness, but I do have a special guest, Isabel Chavez. She'll start us off with the invocation and pledge, and then, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd love to say a couple of words.
Absolutely. Everyone, please rise.
Good morning, everyone. Just in the spirit of the chairman's request today that we be led in peace and grace and the supervisors doing the people's work, and that he also guide everyone in the audience that came to do the people's work on their end of the deal. So I hope that God graces everyone with grace and patience, and in this I pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for that. Supervisor Gallardo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and yes, where'd she go? She said Isabel. Thank you. Isabel Chavez is a dear friend of mine. We've known each other for a very, very long time. She actually is my appointee to our Parks Board, so she does all the great works in regards to our parks. Isabel has just been a great advocate out there, particularly out in the Levine, West Phoenix area. She's one of those that always steps up and wants to volunteer and lend a hand. So thank you, Isabel, for spending time this morning, just leading us off in the invocation and the pledge. I appreciate and definitely always appreciate your friendship and support you give to our office. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to number four, pet showcase by Maricopa County Animal Care and Control. Kim, good morning, and who is with you today?
All right. Good morning. Well, if anyone can see the dog that I have here, it does not match the dog that is on the presentation. That's Cutie. She actually was in her space surgery this morning. So it's okay because we couldn't decide between Cutie and Mellow, so I guess it's just Mellow's time to shine. Mellow came to the shelter on March 20th, so he's been there for about a month now. He was found as a lost dog and didn't have any ID on him, so he is now available for adoption. We believe he's about four years old. He has been a ball of joy really at the shelter. He's been on a lot of our Tales Around Town adventures. People are bringing him to breweries and getting Starbucks pop cups, and he's enjoying all of it, of course. But he would like to do that more permanently and in a home of his own. And like his name, he is pretty mellow. I'm guessing because of his breed, I think he's a Husky-Shepherd mix. Your guess is as good as ours, of course, but he probably has some energy that he'd like to burn. So he would probably acclimate to really any home that he's in because he's been pretty calm while we're in here as well. But he knows sit and shake, and he'll catch treats in the air for fun, so that's always a good time and really cute. And yeah, I can safely say he is pretty mellow. He is already neutered, so that means he can go home today.
Wow. Thank you. Good luck, Mellow. Thank you, Kim. Okay, we are moving on. Under our consent agenda, number five, Qudora Desert Hills. Madam Clerk, any registered? No, actually, the board will now consider item five unless any of the supervisors wish to pull this item from our consent agenda for planning and zoning. Okay, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chair, I move approval of the planning and zoning consent agenda, item five, in accordance with commission recommendations as printed in the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Stewart. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, moving on. Statutory hearings. Clerk of the Board, six A, new liquor license for Carnacea El Torito. Under Transportation, seven A and B road file declarations as listed on the agenda. And items eight through 12, patent easement abandonments as listed on the agenda. Madam Clerk, any registered speakers or comments for items six A through 12?
Chairman, none were received for these items.
Okay, thank you. The board will now consider items six A through 12.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move items six A, seven A, and B, and items eight to 12 as listed on the agenda.
Madam Vice Chair, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Stewart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to the Board of Supervisors' consent agenda, items 13 through 61. Supervisors, do you wish to remove any item from our consent agenda? Okay, I don't hear any. The board will now consider items 13 through 61. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move items 13 to 61 on the consent agenda.
Madam Vice Chair, thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Chair, I have a second and a comment.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Stewart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Supervisor Stewart.
Thank you, Chairman. I want to thank Keith Johnson for his desire to serve on our board, on our self-insured risk trust fund board of trustees. It's a great honor to have him on that board, and I wish him great success in administering the Maricopa County Self-Inured Risk Trust Fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Stewart. I want to highlight item number 25, non-cash donations to the sheriff's office, accepting a donation of 460 pails of hard-boiled eggs totaling 9,200 pounds from Maricopa County Sheriff's Office from Hickman Farms. And Supervisor Lesko, Hickman Farms is in your district, but we're all well aware of the wonderful work that the Hickman family and Hickman Farms does for Maricopa County. So I'm sure we all agree that we're very grateful for this really wonderful generous donation, especially around the time of Easter. On March 20th of this year, 275 pails were received, and on April 4, 2025, 185 pails were received. We're really grateful to Hickman family and Hickman Farms. Thank you all very much. Okay, moving on to the Board of Supervisors' regular agenda. Under Human Services, item 62, amend IGA with City of Tempe. Under Industrial Development Authority, items 63 through 64, adopt resolutions approving issuance of bonds for Legacy Traditional School in Chandler, Paragon Management Doing Business as Paradise Schools. And under Public Health, number 65, IGA with Maricopa County Special Healthcare District. Madam Clerk, any speaker or comments for items 62 through 65?
Chairman, I did receive one speaker form, and this is to speak on item number 65, the IGA with Maricopa County Special Healthcare District from Catherine Poehl.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Poehl, if you're here, you have two minutes. And I also ask, in case there's any questions, if there's any staff for this item, to please come forward in case you are needed.
Ryan White was going through this ordeal while I was pregnant with my first child in Miami-Dade County. After having her, I would start volunteering at a clinic, group counseling, hearing about these ladies suffering with AIDS-HIV. I worked as a CNA and saw outrageous things. Through years of dedication, I've noticed inconsistencies with what is being reported and what is actually happening. Dr. Seabee was going to trial in New York for curing people with those viruses in 1987. He once stated, "There are not many diseases; there are only one." He never said what that one was, but I know now it's parasites. A phony charge was used to arrest him in Honduras, and he died there. So here we are, years later, and we're still trying to use a little boy's name to get money. While you have giving these hospitals that are generating billions in revenue a year, giving Chase Stadium half a billion dollars, they have their own revenue. 2014 to 2024, you gave Valleywise $934 million to remodel. So why are we here again asking for more money? At some point, all of this laundry and kickbacks lining your pockets is going to catch up to you. You could delete it from your computers and your phones, but it'll still be found. Are you working with Fauci? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the board will now consider items 62 through 65. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move items 62, 63, 64, and 65 as presented on the agenda.
Madam Vice Chair, is there? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Supervisor Stewart, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, moving on. Under Real Estate, number 66, resolution authorizing chairman to execute certain utility easements. Madam Clerk, any speakers or comments for item number 66?
None for this item, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. The board will now consider item number 66. Is there a motion for this item?
Mr. Chairman, I move item 66 be approved.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Stewart. Madam Clerk, does this require unanimous consent?
Chairman, yes, it does.
Okay, thank you. Please call the roll.
Thank you. Supervisor Stewart?
Yes.
Supervisor Brophy McGee?
Aye.
Supervisor Lesko?
Aye.
Supervisor Gallardo?
Aye.
Chairman Galvin.
Aye. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Okay, moving on. Under Sheriff, number 67, IGA for Law Enforcement Services. Madam Clerk, any speakers or comments for item number 67?
Chairman, none for this item.
Okay, thank you. The board will now consider item number 67. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, please.
Supervisor Lesko.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. After the motion, I would like, I'm sorry, I jumped in too fast. I'd like to have some discussion.
No, no apologies necessary. You came in at the right time. Thank you. Okay, I'll ask again. Is there a motion for item number 67?
Mr. Chairman, I move item number 67 as presented.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Stewart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Oh, did she want to speak before the vote? I apologize. I thought you said after. Okay, Supervisor Lesko, please go ahead. My apologies.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board. I think this is a good item on the agenda where we are adding law enforcement to help with flood control. And one of the things that they could do is to help remove homeless encampments in the riverbeds between Sun City and Sun City West and between the city of Youngtown and the city of El Mirage. There are quite a few homeless encampments, and I have had a number of constituents with concerns of people going into their home or into their backyards, onto their properties. And so I think this is helpful, not only to our constituents, but it will help protect our flood control staff. And with that, I approve and yield back.
Wonderful comments. Thank you, Supervisor Lesko. Is there a motion for this item?
Yes.
Okay, and we have a second, right? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Board of Supervisors' addendum, number 68, settlement in Maricopa County versus El Paso Natural Gas Company. 69, settlement in Maricopa County versus the Glen Harbor Business Park Property Owners Association. 70, assignment and use of space within Maricopa County facilities policy A1924. 71, reimbursement of nuisance mitigation expense policy A1140. Madam Clerk, any speakers or comments for items 68 through 71?
Chairman, two have been received to speak on item number 71.
Okay, thank you.
Louimar Garza and Tom Arnold.
Thank you. Ms. Garza, please come up.
71, I believe. Okay. 71, the reimbursement of nuisance mitigation expenses. And perhaps, Ms. Lesko, if you had read it correctly, on the item four for the policy under the B, it says it refers to maintaining a public nuisance only applies to a situation where the county was aware of a public nuisance on property owned, possessed, or controlled by Maricopa County. So either ChatGPT wrote this for you, or you are not noticing that you are only using this to protect city property. Now, you kind of mix two things, personal, et cetera. So I'm trying to figure out which properties you're referring to. Is there a max cap of $3,000 for reimbursement? Is it a minimum of $3 for reimbursement? And on top of that, I truly feel that your segue under Procedures, item five, number C, is only so that you can have a bunch of people assigned, pay them, because you are going to get an agenda item saying you've given us a whole new job to do. We've got 15 people that we've got to have at these meetings, and we have 30 days to accept the application. We have from the Clerk of Board, Ms. Juanita Garza. And I'm beginning to think that perhaps her and I have been planted here, given the same last name. But she is put in complete charge of this, the Clerk of Board, to, I guess, identify all these individuals under one, two, three, four, five, plus another nine under six. And all of you are going to say, "We need a million dollars to be able to process these particular reimbursement expenses." So I would really like not pass this one, kind of reconsider the entire, everything that's written in it because you are only doing it for the purpose of taking more taxpayer money so that you can have bagels and donuts in the morning. Thank you. Cash, we really need you.
Thank you. Mr. Arnold.
Good morning. Board of Supervisors, on record, you have effectively removed over 85, excuse me, 58% of the agenda items from the public input. That being said, agenda item 71. In the hyperlink, it lists on page three, it is contingent, two-dash-nine million dollars. I have two questions. I'll ask them both at the same time so we don't run out of time, and I'd like an answer, please. Who is the funder for this? And the other question is, oh, let me come back to the second question. Thomas Galvin with the Rose Law Firm, the clientele you deal with, seemed to make this agenda item off-limits for you to vote on. Is this a conflict of interest for you?
County Manager, there was a question regarding funding. If you could help answer that question?
Oh, can I ask one more thing? I'd like to get the other question so I don't run out of time, and I'd like answers for all three, please.
County Manager.
Mr. Chairman, I don't see in the policy where it references $9 million. Could you repeat the reference for me again?
It just said in the hyperlink to the, on page three.
I'm sorry, Chairman. Page three only has the revision history of the policy for item number 71.
Okay.
County Manager, I have a question for you. This is related to what law was recently promulgated that required... This is related to what law was recently promulgated that requires county action on this.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. This was actually a voter-approved proposition, and for reimbursement for any potential damage to the property caused by any of the nuisances that are listed in this policy per new state law.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Okay. The Board will now consider items sixty-eight through seventy-one. Is there a motion?
Sir?
Sir, your time, your time is up. The microphone is off.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item, let me go here, I'm sorry.
Oh, Debbie has a question.
Oh, hold on. Supervisor Lesko, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted, there was some explanation of item number seventy-one, but I think a more thorough explanation would help the audience members and the public understand better what this is for. As you have said, Chairman Galvin, this is, this item seventy-one is because there was a voter-approved measure that passed on the ballot that says if, basically, I'm paraphrasing, but basically, if a property owner expenses items to mitigate homeless encampments and other type of things like drug abuse, those type of things, on their property, they are now allowed to seek a reduction in their property taxes. And so Maricopa County needs to be prepared for this in case we get any applications. Is that, is my understanding correct? Could a staff member please address it?
Supervisor Lesko, thank you. Jennifer?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Lesko, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Lesko, any other comments or questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Gallardo?
No, Mr. Chairman, unless the vice chair is ready to make, oh, okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve items sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, and seventy-one.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to number seventy-two, Temporary Use of Maricopa County Facilities Policy Revision. Number seventy-three, Precinct Committee Men Appointment and Vacancy Request Policy Revision. The Board will now consider items seventy-two and seventy-three. Madam Clerk, any speakers or comments for these questions, for these two items?
Chairman, none for these items.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move items seventy-two and seventy-three for approval.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Stewart. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. We will recess as the Board of Supervisors and convene as the Flood Control District Board of Directors. Under Flood Control District Seventy-four, change order for Guadalupe, FRS, interim fix, final, and post-design. Seventy-five and seventy-six, declare, sell excess parcels. Seventy-seven, IGA with city of Peoria. Seventy-eight, IGA for Law Enforcement Services. Seventy-nine, minutes. The Board will now consider items seventy-four through seventy-nine. Madam Clerk, any speakers for these items?
Chairman, yes, I do have a few speakers, speaker forms for some of these items. First of all, Louimar Garza has submitted a speaker form to speak on item number seventy-four, which is the, I'm sorry, the change order. Christine Vale wishes to speak on item number seventy-eight, the IGA for Law Enforcement Services. And Roger Pickrell and Leslie Shepherd both wish to speak on item seventy-nine, which is the minutes.
Okay, thank you. Madam Garza, seventy-four.
Louimar Garza, reminding you once again, I'm homeless. So the seventy-one that you passed, again, I remind you, you really don't know what you're doing. Ain't that right, Mr. Liddy? All right, to number seventy-four. This is the Fourth Amendment that you've had in this contract, which started in March of 2021. Four years later, you've had every year an increase on this contract that you yourself said has come to a two-hundred-and-ten percent increase on this contract. Even though you're only asking for a measly ninety thousand on this go-round, you have taken it from a four-hundred thousand to a one-point-two-four-zero-million contract. That's fifty percent increase a year. Where are your development planners, your budget, your audit, et cetera, to accept this kind of money laundering again and again? I have noticed on your agendas that you have Amendment Financial Number Four, Five, Six, Seven, Eight, Nine, continuously accommodating, I'm assuming, interest. But we're going to say it's downright laundering. You should be ashamed of yourselves in what you've been accomplishing. And in this particular one, also, I noticed it will add the ninety thousand to a black and viatch corporation. I would actually look a little bit deeper into that corporation and maybe cut ties altogether, turn around and sue them for dragging you along unless you've been doing it willingly, which, according to the agenda that I've been dealing with for the last year and a half here in Maricopa County, that is what you are doing. Do better.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. We now have a speaker for item number seventy-eight.
Christine, excuse me, Christine Vale?
Kristin Vale. First of all, Agenda Items Seventy-eight and sixty-seven are associated. Security for patrolling a flood basin. I have a couple of questions, and also to reiterate that it appears as though that the Board of Supervisors have fifty-eight percent of the agenda items from the public input. Now for the Board of Supervisors, the contract for seventy-eight and sixty-seven, side-by-side, looking at the contract, they are exactly the same. So why are they the same, and why is one in the Flood Control District and the other is under the Sheriff's category? It's not just corresponding to one another. It appears to be the same. Would you please explain? It looks like you may be double-dipping. The amount per contract state, two-hundred-and-two-hundred thousand dollars. So does that mean that this is collectively doubled to add up to four-hundred-four-hundred thousand dollars?
Thank you. County Manager, how is item number seventy-eight distinct from other agenda items today?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. That was a good question. The Flood Control District is a special taxing district, and the Board of Supervisors sits as the Board of Directors for that district. So you have to adjourn as the Board of Director, as the Board of Supervisors in order to vote as the Board of Directors for Flood Control. So you have to have mirror agenda items when you're voting as the Board of Supervisors versus the Board of Directors. So it's not double.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your question.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Next up, Roger Pickrell, followed by Leslie Shepherd on item number seventy-nine.
Good morning, Chair, Board, Roger Pickrell. I'm here to speak on Agenda Item Number Seventy-nine. January twenty-ninth and February twelfth, 2025, the minutes, the denial of redress and unlawful rules. This, this comment concerns both the January twenty-ninth and February twelfth, 2025 minute entries, and I ask that the Board not approve them until key events are added, such as, on January twenty-ninth, Supervisor Mark Stewart tried to respond to a constituent, but Deputy County Attorney Rep. Jordan silenced him, citing a supposed rule. This moment, or that moment, a suppression of public redress must be recorded. Then regarding the minutes for February twelfth, when asked if Chairman Galvin would allow Ray Michaels and Jeff Zink and Jody Brackett to turn in their speak slips since they arrived well before public comment, but missed an arbitrary ten-minute window at the start of the meeting, that policy not grounded in law, blocked them from speaking, and must be recorded. These are not minor details. They reflect a pattern of the Board inventing rules outside constitutional limits. Please correct these minutes before approving them. Ladies and gentlemen, I've been for you many times, as well as we, the people. We all have rules. We all have to do that in each of our own personal lives, as well as our public lives. And as a Vietnam vet, I want to recognize the fact that I had to be held accountable by Military Code of Justice. And that meant for anything that I would be stepping up each day when we went through officers' call, instruction, and advisement to do what we do. I accept that, and I want to accept that to you as an update to keep your accountability upfront and transparent. God bless you, God keep you, and make America great again.
Thank you, Mr. Pickrell. Supervisor Stewart?
Thank you. Thank you for that notification. Ms. Garza, is it possible to approve the minutes today and amend those with those additions for our next meeting?
Chairman, if that is how the Board wishes to vote today, we can.
Is there an issue here? Who's here is from MCAO to discuss this?
Mr. Chairmembers of the Board, the open meeting law requires that minutes include the date, time, and place of the meeting, the members of the public body that were present or absent, the general description of the matter is considered, accurate description of all legal actions proposed, discussed, or taken, and a record of how the members voted. That is the requirements under open meeting law for minutes.
Are there any issues with how the minutes are presented to the Board today?
My understanding is that there are not.
Okay. Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In actuality, Maricopa County goes above and beyond in recording the comments associated with agenda items, because as Brooke pointed out, our MCAO open meeting law expert, as she pointed out, all that's required is the agenda, the action taken, and the resulting vote. So I am comfortable with the minutes as they have been presented.
Supervisor Gallardo, any comments on this item?
No, I, I was a little thrown off on, on what we're trying to add, but I definitely agree with the comments made. I'm comfortable with the agenda item.
Supervisor Lesko?
I have no comments.
Okay, we're going to move on to the next speaker. Ms. Shepherd, good morning.
Okay. Again, yeah, Agenda Item Number Seventy-nine, I was noticing, I went back and I looked at the notes, and based on what Jordan just read out loud, is when I was looking at some of the things that says, you know, legal action or whatever, I know that that, that would be covered, probably in the Library District, there was some legal stuff that was brought up in that meeting that's trying to be approved in the notes today. I mean, in, in one of the agenda items today. But the other thing I wanted to mention is Agenda Item Number Seventeen, on the, on twenty-ninth of January, there was a gentleman by the name of, let's see, what was his name? Fidel Venezuela, that was called up for Agenda Item Number Seventeen. He wasn't here, but another woman spoke up, her name is Brianna, and she said, "I'm going to be speaking on his behalf." And not one thing was said, and you didn't correct anything, you didn't shut her down. I think that's important, because we literally watched you on, on the twenty-six, do completely opposite of that for a handicap man that was going to speak during somebody else's speaker. So I think that that, absolutely, that should be in the notes, because you allowed somebody to speak for somebody else, and I think that that should be put in there. And also, the other thing that I noticed that is not put in there is, you know, bless your heart, little Steve, you're often late. They should be putting that stuff in there. And also, the speakers' names are actually not put in there. When the speakers get up to speak, I've noticed you guys don't, maybe you don't list what they speak on, in some cases you do, but in some cases, you don't list them at all. And so I would think that the speakers, whoever speak that day, should be going on record in the minutes. Is there a reason why the, the speakers would not be going in the minutes?
Thank you.
That, that's my question for you. Is there a reason why the speakers are not being put in the minutes?
Brooke?
Mr. Chairmembers of the Board, again, under Open Meeting Law, Section Thirty-eight, four-thirty-one dot oh-one-C, the requirements of the meeting minutes are enumerated under that provision, and it does not include the names of speakers from the public.
Okay. I did go look at your notes. I did read them. It's interesting what you guys do decide to put in the notes. It's very, very complimentary to you.
Your time is up. Thank you so much for your comments, Ms. Shepherd. Okay, so we've had some discussion here at the Board. The Board will now consider items seventy-four through seventy-nine, and is there a motion for this item?
Mr. Chairman, I move item seventy-four to seventy-nine be approved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Stewart. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. We will adjourn as the Flood Control Board of Directors and convene as the Library District Board of Directors. The Board will now consider item eighty, which is the minutes for the Library District. Madam Clerk, any speakers or comments for item eighty?
Chairman, I do have one speaker form from Barbara Ratty. She wishes to speak on item eighty minutes.
Okay. Good morning, Ms. Ratty.
Good morning. Agenda Item Eighty, Minute Approval. Board, my concerns is the minutes do not reflect the speakers talking with you all about the legal accountability under ARS thirteen-thirty-five oh-seven, which is lawful. Board of Supervisors, I'm here to follow up on the public presentation delivered to you on March twenty-six, 2025, by making sure the minutes reflect the content that was covered that day concerning ARS thirteen-thirty-five oh-seven, crimes against children. As you have made aware of, this Arizona law makes it clear, knowingly allowing sexually explicit material to remain accessible to minors carries criminal consequences. At this point, you can no longer claim ignorance. You've been notified publicly, and within forty-eight hours of that presentation, Tom Liddy, your county attorney, gave the Board a private one-hour briefing on the same issue. So the question becomes, what action has been taken promptly as the law requires? The minutes need to reflect the urgency in which this needs immediate action. We're not asking for censorship, we're asking for age-appropriate responsibility. The issue is not banning books, it's about removing sexually explicit content from the children's department. Your action at this point is not only disappointing, it risks being unlawful. You're still allowing sex pictures to be given or allowed to be given to children. Why are you guys still allowing this stuff? That's all I have to ask. Can you answer that question? Why are you allowing these children to have access to this type of stuff? You can't answer me? You can't answer the people?
Mr. Chairman?
Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you very much. You may not be aware of this, but Supervisor Lesko has initiated a review of our library policy in terms of appropriate books, accessible, readily accessible to children. It does, given the legal issues that have to be navigated, take some work, and it takes some time. I have joined in on those efforts because of, it's important to me as a parent and a grandparent. But you, it does take time to develop the policy, and I think the intent is to align it with the very clear state statute. So the other thing, going back to minutes, this kind of, for me, goes under the heading of no good deed goes unpunished. I have been on previous boards where our minutes did the very best to memorialize every comment by every board member, by every speaker. And what results is people getting up and saying, "I didn't say that, I didn't mean that, that wasn't my intent," and, and so you go down that rabbit hole. What that results in, over time, is to pare back the minutes to the legal minimum as outlined by our open meeting law attorney. I would prefer that comments be memorialized so that you have a better context in reading those minutes. But naming speakers, you, you really go down a situation, get up and say, "You didn't spell my name right," or "You didn't do this, you didn't do that." It really is supposed to reflect the work and the actions taken by the Board on your behalf. And so I understand the misunderstandings, but I like the minutes the way they are, and, and would like to. And thank you very much, Mrs. Ratty. You make my point. So I wanted to tell you what is going on behind the scenes, because I am involved in that effort. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Stewart?
Thank you. I think there's a, a bit of a disconnect on the meeting minutes and what we're working on here. They will not always be perfect, so I concur with Supervisor Brophy McGee. We will do our best to amend those if we need to, or keep those as updated as possible, but we appreciate the feedback. On the library situation, we are working diligently on just that issue. I've spoken with a number of people in the audience, as well as folks in the public about this issue. We're working directly with the Queen Creek Library, Mayor Wheatley, and the Board there to, to essentially keep our kids safe, right? And also respect the fact that it is a library, and we want to fill the mission of that library to provide books for learning and education. And on occasion, books do get through that are not appropriate for minors, and we are working on that diligently, and we will continue to work on that. You will see probably the fruition or the end You will see probably the fruition or the end of this. It will take some time to get that policy in place, but we are leading the charge in Arizona to make sure that our kids are safe in our libraries. And you can drop your kids off, they can go in the library, and they can read the books that are appropriate for their age. So thank you for bringing that up.
Supervisor Stewart and Supervisor Brophy McGee, thank you both for your comments, which indicate your passion, as we all share, on this issue. The Board will now consider Item Number 80. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of Item Number 80.
Madam Vice Chair, thank you. Supervisor, thank you for the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will now adjourn as the Library District Board of Directors and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. We will go into Item Number 81, Public Comment. Madam Clerk, do we have anything to report regarding public comment email responses?
Chairman, nothing to report regarding email responses, but we did receive 14 requests to speak.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. And once again, thank you to all 14 who signed up to speak for public comment. As always, Madam Clerk will read out three names. She'll read whoever's up next, whoever's on deck, whoever's in the hole. I ask and expect everyone to be respectful of the people speaking. This is their time to address the Board in their full time of two minutes. Also, we have rules of decorum, so if anyone speaks out of order, they will be warned. Madam Clerk, please read out the first three names.
Jamie Martin, Diane Barker, Dawn Adams.
I have over 30 years of compliance experience, including leading over 60 vendor corrective action plans at American Express, and I served in Arizona's election system during the 2020 cycle. I'm here today because Resolution 3, which was adopted by the MCRC Executive Guidance Committee and mandated the enforcement of corrective action plans for third-party election vendors, still hasn't been acted on. 2020 is not over yet. After the 2020 election, only one vendor, Dominion, had their contract updated. That's it. No audit, no review, no enforcement. That's a direct violation of ARS 412501 and 16-161, which require contract compliance and vendor system performance to be continuously assessed, not just at signing. Resolution 3 gives this Board the power to fix what was missed. It includes a full 90-day cap protocol, root cause analysis, vendor audits, and remediation, all documented and enforceable. I've submitted that framework, and it's ready to go. The only thing holding us back are the leaders who won't acknowledge it. Resolution 3 gives this Board the power to fix what was missed. We can't fix everything that happened in 2020, but we can definitely prevent it from ever happening again. Let's move from statement to action. Start the cap, begin the audit, put the people back in charge of their elections. I am demanding that Arizona leaders publicly acknowledge this compliance failure and take the steps provided in a passed resolution that requires action. If you believe it's not within your scope, maybe it's time to redefine your scope. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Diane Barker, Dawn Adams, followed by Barbara Ratty.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, and Thomas Galvin, our chairman, and my supervisor, five. I'd like to have a meeting with you. Today, I wanted to share what happened with me Saturday. I had an appointment at 51st and Indian School. Steve, that's your area. And I decided to take light rail, left downtown, and bus 41 to the appointment at 51st. Okay, after that, I went over to Walmart, and man, for a few items that I was getting, I was, I had two lines that were 100, over 100 people on either way. You look out in the parking lot, all cars, all cars. I had a hard time, you know, parking my little folding bicycle that is my computer because there wasn't any bicycle rack. Finally, I asked, and it was way, way out of the place where, and I wouldn't park it there because I know things get stolen. So I'm here to tell you, the West Phoenix has been designated the worst air quality. It's part of Maricopa County. We need to get after that. And I want to remind you how we got to where we, and if we don't watch out where we're going, we may end up there. How do we get in this situation? And it started from the Board of Supervisors with $7 million for the 300 regional road fund, the first one in 1985. You weren't here. Ed Pastore is here. He has a long history bringing money in for the light rail. We don't need any more at grade light rail. The left-hand turn is making accidents and mag if it exempts public transit. We must put our transit in and see where all of our pollution is coming. It's not all single occupancy cars.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Dawn Adams, Barbara Ratty, Christina Tyler.
This is a post from like 11 days ago. Out of left field yesterday, Trump pushed the former director of CISA, Director Chris Krebs, out into the spotlight by yanking his security clearance and referring him to the DOJ, going so far as to mention treason. Today, Tulsi Gabbard announced evidence discovered vulnerabilities with voting machines that allow hackers to alter vote totals. Expect this trend not only to, not only continue unfolding in the obvious direction that it's going, but rapidly at that. Once exposed to the public, this part will blow the doors off of, well, everything. The sheer gravity and depth and breadth of the criminality, treason involved here will shock the world. This will, you all know where this ends, and it's not good because 2020, it's not over yet.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Barbara Ratty, Christina Tyler, Roger Pickrell.
The people's right to be heard and the Constitution over legal loopholes, that's what I'm talking about. Ladies and gentlemen, members of the Board, we are here today not just as citizens, but as the people you were elected to serve. When we stand before you with questions, we are exercising a fundamental right. We have the right to petition our government for answers. This is not a privilege, it is a constitutional guarantee. Yet, time and again, when one of you tries to respond, or you go to a lawyer or whomever to answer your questions, they claim open meeting rules forbid it. But let's be clear, no bureaucratic rule overrides the Constitution. The First Amendment guarantees our right to engage with our government, and it is your duty as elected officials to honor that. This is not just about legal technicalities, it's about accountability. The people did not elect lawyers to run this county. We elected you, and your job is to answer to us, not to attorneys who seemed more concerned when silencing discussion than upholding transparency. So I ask each of you, who do you serve? The lawyers you tell to remain silent, who tell you to remain silent, or the people who put their trust in you to lead? We demand transparency, we demand answers, and above all, we demand that you honor the Constitution above your lawyer's interpretation of a rule designed to suppress open dialogue. And I'd also like to say, you went ahead and you approved those meeting minutes when you knew they were not complete. That's unfair. That's unlawful. But anyways.
Thank you, Ms. Ratty. Madam Clerk.
Christina Tyler, Roger Pickrell, Leslie Shepherd.
So the first thing that I'd like to say today is that I usually don't even like to write down anything at all prior to speaking because I have really, really, really bad anxiety with public speaking and trying to think about anything associated with, with having to speak on topics that are more memorized. But today's speech, I wanted to do a little bit differently. I want to speak about how unequal my life has been, with specifically pertaining to policies that have not changed. So I've had a non-cancerous brain tumor called a prolactinoma, and it, after I had received treatment for it, I had gotten pregnant, and the type of brain tumor that I had would have been able to come back. And that brain tumor also caused a cerebral spinal fluid leak and half my brain herniate and in my spine. And even though I had gotten pregnant and needed an abortion, our laws allow it to where the neurologist, the neurologists wouldn't allow, fill out the documentation so that way insurance would approve it, and neither would my physician. I've also not been allowed extra time on tests during class, it's a requirement outside of class. I'm not allowed rewarding of questions on Pearson-based tests so I could become whatever I wanted. I'm not allowed to use vocational rehabilitation to start a 501(c)(3), even though it's a pathway to self-employment. I'm not allowed to have neurosurgery to wrap my cyst on my sacrum nerve because none of those neurosurgeons in our state are trained to do it. I am not allowed a digital motion X-ray to show improved instability. I am not allowed to go on a Freedom to Work program due to being diagnosed with autism over 18.
Thank you very much.
And you have to provide the webinar.
Madam Clerk.
Roger Pickrell, Leslie Shepherd, Tom Arnold.
Roger Pickrell, thank you, Chair and Board. We're going to be discussing a probability of needing to have times that we need to get away from subjects that are not compromised. Galvin should recuse himself as a partner at Rose Law Group. That firm specializes in zoning, real estate, water rights, all areas directly impacted by Board votes, especially today's agenda items that were pushed into the consent calendar without public input. You should be recusing yourself, you should not be voting on these matters, yet here you are, chairing this meeting, controlling the consent agenda, silencing public comment, and voting on items that could directly or indirectly benefit your firm or its clients. This is a textbook conflict of interest. It is not, it's not hidden, it's public. You list your position proudly on your firm's website and on your county bio. You direct zoning and opportunity zones for Rose Law Group while overseeing Maricopa's own zoning, water, and stadium districts. That's not public service, that's double-dealing. We need leadership free from divided loyalties, step back from any vote that could benefit Rose Law Group or your own reputation. Until then, the integrity of this Board is compromised. We just need understanding that our, once again, we need accountability of fairness across the Board. What's good for you is good for us and us for you. We put people with a little bit of our authority and our power to give it to our electorates. We just expect those to do that for we, the people. And we have to have a lot of venues to be non-compromised. God bless you, God keep you, and keep open transparency.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk.
Leslie Shepherd, Tom Arnold, Kristin Vale.
Well, some of the things that I was going to say, Ben said, I just want to draw our attention to the fact that at the last meeting, Catherine Polk was kicked out, and Thomas Galvin, you went on record saying that her name was not called, it absolutely was called, and you still kicked her out. We saw also, again, going back to January 29th, Agenda Item Number 17, you spent an entire hour on that one agenda item. You gave way more time to that agenda item than you did the one in which we had people who wanted to speak. One was for it and four against it, and you eliminated two of the speakers that were against us to have a voice on record. The other thing that happened is you two, Roger Pickrell approached the podium to let you know that his name wasn't called, and you told him to hurry up. You're talking to a Vietnam vet, Thomas Galvin. The error was made on your guys' behalf, and you told him, hurry up. It was also on record that you pointed out that Ray Michaels said something disrespectful to Debbie Lesko. That was already cleared up with every single one of you through an email from Roger Mabyn. As you know, not one of you guys responded, and no apologies have come from you at all either, Thomas Galvin, for falsely accusing Ray Michaels of that. So I'm just, I'm getting some of these things on record because I'm sitting here looking at you, and I'm glad that he brought up the fact that you actually do work for a law firm, that almost every single topic that's discussed on our agendas, you have a heavy influence on, and your clients actually are, could easily be affected by your choices. And so I think you are, not only do I think that you are somebody who does not make the Constitution your standard because you've eliminated our voice in here effectively in 2025 in for the agenda items, you guys have cut them out more than ever before and historically have done, you have not shown yourself to that the First Amendment right. And it doesn't take a policy, Lesko. You guys can just make a decision to let us have webinar.
Tom Arnold, Kristin Vale, Joby Brackett.
The public comment I wanted to make, I'm going to defer until next week or in two weeks from now. I'd just like to get on the record when the Agenda Item 71, I had mentioned that there was two questions. I think one was answered, but I'm not sure. The second one was not answered. And then I had said something about, I want to go ahead and read the rest because hopefully I'll get an answer to all three questions. If I waited for an answer to the first and second, I would have run out of time, which I did. And that's why I stood here for so long afterwards. The second thing I wanted to address on Agenda Item Number 71, and it's already been voted on, and there was a question for Mr. Galvin, and I know in public comment, you're not, you can't answer. I would hope in the agenda items that you would have answered. So I'm going to, knowing that I might get an answer now, I'll go ahead and put it out for public comment. Thomas Galvin, with the Rose Law Firm that, plantill you all deal with, seem to make this Agenda Item Number 71 off limits for you to vote on. Was there a serious conflict of interest? And my question, I was going to ask him and hopefully get an answer, how do you justify voting on this issue and not show a conflict of interest being your role as Board of Supervisors and your role as being a partner with the Rose Law Firm whose clients can benefit by your vote? I'll come back to the public comment again in two weeks, but again, it just dealt with, can we please get webinar access? And it was going to be addressed to Debbie Lesko, who, she has access to that today.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Kristin Vale, Joby Brackett, Louis Mar Garza.
Chairman, Chairman Galvin, you've said you're proud to serve the public, we, the people, and you also serve private clients, clients who want land approvals, zoning variances, water rights, and development permits. Development permits, okay. The problem appears to be that you hold power over every one of those issues as Chairman of the Board of Supervisors. Today's consent agenda is filled with land and development items. The public, we, the people, are once again denied a voice. However, you, a zoning lawyer... However, you, a zoning lawyer, got to vote without declaring a potential conflict. That may not just be unethical, it may also be possibly illegal. At the very least, it can be viewed as a violation of public trust, trust of we, the people. When the same person profits from zoning law and controls the zoning district, how is that not a conflict? It appears that there may be some lines blurred here between attorney and public servant. This underscores why there should be recusals versus rubber stamps. Perhaps Cash Patel and Tulsi Gabbard may need to come to Arizona to take a look at this potential conflict of interest in the Board of Supervisor leadership. And we welcome those as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Joby Brackett, Louis Mar Garza, Catherine Paul.
Hello, my name is Jody Brackett. I'm a PC from LD 28. Mr. Heap had come and spoke with, to the board, I mean, to the LD the other night. And I understand the recorder's job has been for years in charge of the mail-in ballots and the early voting. And I understand that it's your job to cooperate with the recorder. And I guess last year that the board had met behind scenes, Richard had put that together for the last, with the last board, and took this job illegally away from the county recorder. So I guess Heap has asked and met with you to allow him to do his job and give that job that is, should be his job, back to him. And so I'm highly here to support, to suggest, to please cooperate and do your job and let him do his job. So I have high expectations to this new board, especially you, Lesko, to give this job back to him ASAP, as it should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Louis Mar Garza, Catherine Paul, Blue Crawley.
Let the show continue. For Ms. Lesko, just to let you know, Sheriff Arpaio has signed shorts for three of us, for three lovely ladies, and we hope that if you don't get yourself straight, that each one of you will be gifted one of these with bars in front of you. I will go to Item Number 43, the propaganda to push a sanctuary city. You have taken 58% of this agenda off limits for us to comment, so I'm coming back with my freebie on 43. You have 49 different companies that you're going to be paying in Ohio, California, Pennsylvania, Florida, Michigan, $10 million on an average of $40,000 each individual per year. And I'm wondering how you're calculating, I did notice, 127-page contract of all these individuals, and you're also paying influencers to hype up Maricopa County, while at the same time, you're not paying influencers to help bring them in here to help the homeless people and the hardships that they are going through currently. That being said, you all have no idea how we, the people, are itching to leap into our 1776 George Washington Hancock Franklin rolls, why even Paul Revere. Given the passing of the Pope, it reminds me of the 1978 movie Foul Play, where the matron rushes in, slams the rectory door, turns around and tells the cardinal, "Well, now the shit has really hit the fan." Be reminded that Trump has had in his cadre of PIs and genius detectives, shout out to Aaron Schwartz, working alongside him for at least four decades. What if now the matriarchs have gathered again to fix finally this ungodly mess? Be prepared to be held accountable, each one of you. That said, I do not speak in hyperbole, govern yourselves accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Catherine Paul, Blue Crawley, last speaker, Lisa Everett.
Some of your actions in response to us is juvenile, asking us to have decorum. We have Steve laughing at me last meeting after removing me by officer when Thomas called my name for public speaking. We are taxed to death with no representation. Could have sworn a president many years ago tried to prevent this. His name is Thomas Jefferson. Taxation without representation refers to being required to pay taxes to a government body without having any say in that government's policies or decisions. It's a core concept rooted in the history of the American Revolution and continues to be a point of contention in certain contexts today, particularly with discussing representation for territories. Do you think Rose Group Law Firm could take my case to sue you all for violating my rights to speak and how you treated me the last meeting when I did nothing wrong? I didn't get out of hand, I didn't yell, I didn't scream. And only the few of you that ever look are looking. But Steve, I got you laughing at me last time. I see you smirking. Thank you very much. You're awesome. Yeah, yeah, wave me away, shoo me away. I've got 53 seconds, I could keep going, but I won't because you stressed me out. You drive up my high blood pressure. Not one of you is doing anything about the water, our air, nothing. Sit there smug, I love it, I love it, I love it. You just show me your, how you are. Not once have you been kind to me. Mark Stewart was kind, but not one of you has ever taken the time to say, "Who is this person that keeps coming up here?" Instead of last time saying, "I don't know you, I'm just trying to get my voice heard." So sorry about that, that is messing up your agendas. But guess what? Doge and Cash Patel and everyone else will be here. You cannot delete your records. Good luck.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Blue, followed by the last speaker, Lisa Everett.
I hope she doesn't be showing those signs because it's not.
Microphone, please.
I'm going to be speaking on my usual, and each one of you have a part in this. We need to bifurcate the RPTA from the Valley Metro Rail, and we need to get somebody there other than their current head of the organization, which at the last meeting that I was able to attend, when I said you need to have somebody sitting next to you advocating for the bus because your record shows that three years ago when they hired you, they cut the public out from being able to ask questions or find out what was going on. And when we were able to then ask questions, the question was, how are you going to multimodal what you're doing? Well, they agreed to that $30 million contract I showed you that they have done again that had $600,000 for the bus. And I said, are you going to be using those monies to multimodal? She didn't. The new contract isn't. So what we need is for you at the RPTA, you at MAG, because MAG, what is your plan for the bus? Because RPTA doesn't do it, you do it. So what is the plan and what are we doing for each of your different districts? I need you to bifurcate the funding by districts, not by the different cities. That way, we can get it more of going across jurisdictions and doing it for the whole region. I mean, really, look at your area. It's a desert when it comes to the ability to use the bus.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Lisa, excuse me, Lisa Everett.
I was going to pass, but there's two observations I'd like to make. First, I have personally seen Chairman Thomas Galvin recuse himself when needed. Also, the public knew when they voted for you, Chairman, who you worked for. I've been to various meetings, state, county, city meetings, and I'm seeing a trend from the extreme folks demanding changes in the minutes. It's a tactic, and I'm glad you stood your ground and you're following the rules as needed. That's all I have to say. Have a great day.
Thank you. I warn the audience to allow each speaker to have their time. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for everyone coming down to speak and provide public comment. We're now going to move to the Supervisors section and comments. Supervisor Lesko, I just want you to know that I will be going to you first after the county manager, if that's okay?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. County Manager Prokorsky.
Nothing today. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Lesko.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the audience and the other members. There's a couple of things. I didn't catch the name of the speaker from LD 28. She asked us if we would please work with Recorder Justin Heap on the shared service agreement, and I would like to tell her and everyone in the public that we are working with Justin Heap. And in fact, Justin Heap and his lawyers and met with Chairman Galvin and Vice Chairman Pete Profi-Meggi on April 11th. And I was pleased, I am pleased to inform you and the audience that after that meeting, I received a text from Recorder Heap, and I'm paraphrasing it, but he basically said that he thought the meeting went well and we seemed to be in agreement on 95% of the things, and there's only some minor items about the IT that need to be resolved. So I'm hoping that we continue with this and get a resolution that's agreeable to both sides, done for the benefit of everyone, and I am hopeful we will do so. I also want to bring up Agenda Item Number 15, and I want to thank Jerry Gearing for agreeing to continue serving District 4 on the Travel Reduction Program Task Force. These are unpaid positions, and people volunteered to do it, and I appreciate that. On Agenda Item Number 25, I too want to thank Hickman Farms, former county supervisor Clint Hickman, his brother Glenn Hickman, their mother Gertie Hickman, and the entire Hickman family and Hickman Egg Operation for donating, I think it was 9,200 pounds of hard-boiled eggs to the Maricopa County jails, which at the price of eggs right now is a great donation. I want to update you on a few things that I have been doing since our last meeting. I did meet on April 9th with the Arizona Women of Action to discuss sexually explicit library books in some Maricopa County libraries. I am totally against having sexually explicit books available to children, and our county manager was in that meeting, and our county, our assistant deputy manager that has jurisdiction over the libraries was in that meeting. And I want to reassure the audience and the public that I am working on this, and the board and the staff is working on this, to move any sexually explicit items out of the reach of children. Also, I met with Choices Pregnancy Center, the CEO, Mark Burmitch. They do a lot of great work in our communities, helping women that are pregnant, and they help guide them not only through the pregnancy, but help them after they have the child by referring them to different organizations and charities and churches. They also do STD testing, and so I appreciate their work and partnership with the county on the STD testing. I also met and spoke to the West Valley Republican and Independent Club, which is in Sun City. And I went last week to the West Valley Ham Shack Open House. And for those of you that don't know what that is, it is an amateur radio, which is also called Ham Radio Club, that has a lot of electronics. They have a wonderful, awesome museum with all kinds of equipment, including old record players, all old radios from the beginning of the 1900s. They had a jukebox from 1931, all of this operational, and it's in Youngtown, Arizona, which is in my district. I'd also like to share a spotlight on my community liaison who works for me, Jim Bull. Jim is a retired pastor from Palmcoft Baptist Church where I attended. He also leads my Bible study. He's done an excellent job going out into Supervisor District 4, meeting with various different organizations. But since we met last, he has gone to the Avondale State of the City, led by Mayor Mike Panetta, and was sitting with Senator Warren Peterson. He went to Federico's Grand Opening, the Rod Tree Health and Wellness Ribbon Cutting Ceremony. He also went to groundbreaking for G-Con Phoenix 13 Align Data Center, which is a large data center being built in my district, and also went on Monday night to the Legislative District 28 GOP meeting. So I want to thank him for all his work. Thank you again, and I yield back.
Supervisor Lesko, thank you so much. Supervisor Gallardo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, all five supervisors do a lot of work in their district, do a lot of community events, but there's always a special occasion, something happens that you always remember and you're so happy to be part of it. And it happened this past, this past Saturday, this past weekend. One of our own former colleagues, Supervisor Mary Rose Wilcox, was honored on Saturday by the City of Phoenix, naming Second, Second, yeah, Second Avenue, Second Avenue, right in front of Grand Park, the Mary Rose Wilcox Way. Supervisor Wilcox, who served, I believe it's 21 years, sitting in this very chair, sitting in this very chair, 21 years on the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors. I believe it was nine years on the Phoenix City Council. Right after her tenure here on the Board of Supervisors, she went to Maricopa County, Valleywise, Valleywise District, where she served for a number of years. She has just been a pillar within our community, within Phoenix. She has always been involved in so much. I mean, we were sitting there Saturday, I had the honors of emceeing the event, and I was trying to think of words to really describe her. And she has just been a trailblazer for females to run for public office, helping them get in office. When I, when I actually worked here in Maricopa County in the Elections Department, and I wanted to run, I wanted to go on the other side of the counter and put my name on the ballot and serve in public life, she was one of the first individuals I called to sit down and say, "Hey, I really want to do it." And she was able to just kind of give you those pointers, those guidance, you know, like, here are some folks to call, this is what you need to do type stuff. And she's just been a mentor, a true friend. She has always been active. One of the things that's always been near and dear to her heart, and it's now mine, is the importance of our park system, having open spaces, helping our young people stay active and out of trouble, out of trouble, active and positive, and doing some great stuff. And I know she, unfortunately, right now, she is in the hospital, but I wish her well. It was interesting, there was a special event. It shows you how active she is. She's, you know, she's in the hospital. There was a special event on Monday at her restaurant, and she picks up the phone from her hospital room, she calls the restaurant and talks to her daughter, "How did the event go? How did the event go?" And just shows you how dedicated and active she is in the community. So, Mary Rose, I wish you well, and thank you for your years of service. I know she'll continue to be an advocate for young people and the community in Phoenix. Let it be a light. Let it be a light rail system or bus services, or let it just be clean air or just open spaces. She would always be just a great advocate, and I wish her well.
Supervisor Gallardo, thank you. And before I go to Supervisor Stewart, I'd just like to note how it's nice to see Supervisor Alessio and Supervisor Gallardo highlight and honor previous supervisors. It shows that your service to the county doesn't end when you leave this bench, so that's nice to see. Supervisor Stewart.
Thank you, and thanks for that history lesson there a little bit. It's important for us to know kind of where we were, to know where we're going, so that's important. Thank you. You know, District One, we've been extremely busy, but before I get into that, you know, I want to address a couple of things. I'm really grateful that Supervisor Alessio brought up the conversations that the Recorder and the Board of Supervisors have been having for the last few months. And, you know, we've been meeting, gosh, it seems like every other week, to discuss this SSA and to put this thing to bed, and I think we are right there. We've got a few more i's to dot and t's to cross, but I think we're right there. And I had a really nice conversation with Recorder Heap the other day, and we're tracking along. Sometimes things move at the speed of government, and when you're trying to wrangle five of us together, we have to follow open meeting laws, otherwise, you know, we can get in a lot of trouble. So that's what takes the extra time in many cases. And so this board is working diligently with the Recorder's Office to make sure that we get an SSA that works and that's effective and that we can execute in 2026, or even the special election that's coming up quickly as to the best of our abilities under state law. So I just want to address that, so thank you. Supervisor Alessio, you know, I think it's also important to recognize that, you know, the board is, I've been here for three months, and I've worked with a previous board with the City of Chandler, and integrity as it relates to a recusal from issues that might have a conflict of interest is something that we take seriously. And I've seen on a number of occasions that Chairman Galvin has stepped away from the dais physically on items that we're voting on that may have a conflict of interest in his district, as I've seen other supervisors do as well. And I can tell you that the five of us are very diligent about making sure that that happens because we don't want the impropriety to happen or the view of impropriety to take place. So we will continue to be diligent on that, and we expect the public to hold us accountable in that regard as well. You know, the other thing that I mentioned is that, and this is the fun part, so District One, we've been out in the public, meeting with people. I believe that the community is the eyes and the ears for us to be able to come back to the county and share with staff, this is what our public expects. So, you know, recently, I also met with the Arizona Women of Action. We had a great meeting where we talked about explicit books in our libraries. And so the great thing is, is the public has come to us and said, "Hey, this is a concern of ours." Sometimes things slip through the cracks, and we now have some targeted books that we think just do not belong in the hands of children, and if their parents want to check those out for them, they'll be able to do that. But we have a nice pilot program going on in Queen Creek, and we will eventually take that throughout the library system when we can. But we're kind of building the plane as we fly it here because we wanted to do the immediate triage with these books. So we will respect the First Amendment as it relates to these books and the accessibility, but as it relates to the mission of the library, some of these books do not fit the mission. We can provide good books where kids can learn and they can go and explore, and then we want the libraries to be that place, but we don't want it to be a place where kids can access explicit books, whether that be in illustration or print. So thank you to the Women of Action for that meeting. We also met with St. Joseph the Worker, a friend of mine, Nick Morrison, and we talked about the great work that they're doing in the community to not only help our homeless find housing, but then get them job training, right? So they can get a job, hold their own, and then move on through society. You know, people fall into homelessness for sometimes reasons that they're out of their control, and our job as a society and as the county is to help them where we can. It's called a hand up, not a handout, and the county's doing a fantastic job of that, and so is St. Joseph the Worker. Met with the Arizona Business Council, I'm sorry, the Canada-Arizona Business Council. We had an hour-long meeting about the relationship and the inter-nation trade between our two countries and what an impact they have on the Arizona market. So it was important for me to understand their influence here. Attended the County Supervisors Association meeting where we had heard some good information from the state forester about the impact that they're making on mitigating wildfires. It's a big job. I mean, millions of acres that they're responsible for working on, but we've got grants from the federal government as well as from the state that's helping us mitigate the damage that can be created by those. Also, visited the Chandler Chamber of Commerce, they had a new small business open. That's my favorite thing to do, is go visit these small businesses when they open because I believe that's the lifeblood of any community. But we attended that, and then we've got a number of things coming up over the next few weeks, but Chairman, I appreciate you giving me this extra time to kind of tell you what's going on in District One. Thank you, sir.
Okay, well done. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very quickly, under upcoming events, I wanted to mention a special meeting, study session for the board that will occur tomorrow at 9:30 in the morning. You are welcome to join us in person or online. It is a study session, so it is an opportunity for the board to meet in a publicly noticed meeting and understand and gain deep understanding, and in this case, it will be of the shared services agreement with the recorder. I had the privilege, I have had the privilege of serving on the subcommittee with Chairman Galvin, so it's important to me that even though I've been in the weeds and up close and personal on changes to the SSA, that my colleagues on the board gain equal access and knowledge, and that's the purpose of tomorrow's meeting. We are this close. I'm super excited and very much thank Recorder Heap and his office for working with us on that. Very quickly, I also hope I'm not stepping on the county manager's toes. I wanted to give a shout out to the Maricopa County Medical Examiner's Office. I read the paper paper every morning. You're never going to tear me away from it. And yesterday's paper said that the Maricopa County Medical Examiner's Office solved a 2,004 cold case of a gentleman who was found deceased on the sidewalk, and nobody knew who he was, and they utilized a new DNA technology and reached out with that information and were able to identify the deceased person and bring closure to the family. And that is just so, so important. It puts really the people into the hard work that that office does. Very quickly, a list of events in District Three. Neighborhood associations and business associations meet and organize around safety and quality of life issues, but through that, they build friendships, community, and yes, as my colleague Supervisor Gallardo will tell you, they gather to celebrate particularly this time of year when the weather's nice. So it's just been a blast. It's been busy. I wanted to give a shout out to the North Mountain Business Alliance. I was for the opportunity to speak to their monthly luncheon meeting. I wanted to give a shout out to Shaverhood Fest. They celebrated their first year as an association that was attended by Deputy Chief of Staff Carissa Cortez, and thank you, she brings light wherever she goes. I got, finally scored an invite to Cleo Lewis's Donut Summit. And what the Donut Summit is, and I've already invited Sheriff Sheridan, it's really a venue to come together as law enforcement, whether you're sheriff, police, constable, I met a constable there, and in this case, we honored a retired police officer, I think from Surprise, and really celebrate that special community. It's like none other, and it meets monthly. So anybody who wants to go to a donut summit, and yes, there are real donuts, and they are really good, unfortunately. So thank you Pastor Cleo Lewis for the invitation. We went to the Anthem Neighborhood Alliance and presented there. We also heard a presentation for the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office on their revival of the posse. They were looking to recruit volunteers and explain how the process works. So they're really working on a lot of new ideas, but also a lot of old ideas that a lot of my constituents believe worked very, very well. And from a small business perspective, Books on Seventh Ave, it's just south of Hatcher, and they celebrated their 35th birthday. And if you are a bookworm, especially you like real books, you can find anything there. And they celebrated their 35th birthday. I told the owner, Mary Ann Ramirez, "I'd be telling everybody it was my 35th birthday too." It's just a wonderful place, and it was so fun to celebrate. So with that, Mr. Chair, as my colleague Debbie Alessio would say, I yield back.
Well, thank you. It's just so great to hear everyone, what you're all up to and all the exciting and fun things happening in your districts and also your terrific staff. Every one of the supervisors here have just incredible staff. And in that vein, I'm really proud to welcome Taylor to my team, who just joined this week who's already hit the ground running and has been so impressive. She will be our outreach and communications lead, and Taylor, I'm very lucky to have you join our team. There she is. Say hello. And if you need anything, please contact her. But also, my office is well represented by my Deputy Chief of Staff, Michelle, who is at our Carefree event, and we're there all day on Saturday. It is really important for me to go out and about in my district and to make sure that my office is in our district, and there was no better place to be on Saturday than spending it with our wonderful folks up in Carefree. And then finally, one thing that this board really appreciates and loves to highlight, and we're so proud of our employees and the people that work for us and all the people associated with Maricopa County, they're the ones who really make this county shine. And I'm happy to say that Maricopa County won a Workforce Development Program Award. Maricopa County's Workforce Development Program, Workforce to You, which delivers accelerated job training to rural communities, recently received national recognition at the 2025 National Association of Workforce Boards Annual Forum and was honored with the Excellence in Partnership and Collaboration Award. Steve Clark, Executive Director of the Maricopa County Workforce Development Board, said, "This award reflects the power of partnership in Maricopa County's workforce development. It underscores our commitment to fostering strong collaborations that not only meet the needs of employers and job seekers, but also drive sustainable economic growth and strengthens communities. The National Association of Workforce Boards represents and advocates for the nation's workforce development boards, which are vital in connecting businesses with skilled workers and supporting economic growth in communities across the county. The 2025 Excellence in Partnership and Collaboration Award honors outstanding efforts to build strong partnerships that drive workforce development success." And this is what I said earlier this week in our statement, "Economic security starts with access to opportunity. When we remove barriers and bring workforce training opportunities directly to residents in rural communities, we drive economic development and support families." This national award confirms what we already knew, Maricopa County's commitment to rural workforce development is innovative and making a real impact. And with that, an appreciation to my colleagues and to everyone at staff. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.